Okay, it looks like we have a quorum tonight. And in that regard, if anybody wants to apply for Planning Commission, we have some openings. So let's do our roll call.
Here.
Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda, which is the meeting of today, March 19, 2015. Anybody like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda unless there are any changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a section that's called "Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items." So if it appears on the agenda, this is not the time to stand up and talk, but if you have a public comment on something that is in your mind, this is the time to make a speech. And by the way, we're going to attempt to limit presentations from the audience to three minutes each tonight. If that becomes a problem, we'll reassess that. So now we move on to having no public comments on non-agenda items. We will close that session and move on to consent items. These are items that the staff has recommended permits be issued for. So the first one is 116 Scenic Road, number one. Any?
We can just do them together. We can just do them all together.
Okay, staff, if I have a comment on a consent item, should I should make a comment? Can I make a comment on a consent item? Okay, just one moment.
And you can just ask the audience in whole if they have any comments on any of the items on the consent.
Right, well, anybody involved in this property might after I make my comments. So I wanted to propose the addition of a 27th condition.
I think if we're going to get into the content of it, we need to pull it from the, we would have to pull it from the agenda. If it's just you've got a typo or a clarification question, then we can ask it and leave it on, but typically if there's a content addition, we will have to pull it off.
Well, this may or may not be just a clarification point. It's pursuant to page two of the staff report. Let's see.
Which one?
Okay, this is for 116 Scenic Road. And at page two, "The applicant shall maintain the parking area in a safe and sanitary manner." Is a seemingly conditioned language contained in the paragraph on page two that starts with the word "normally," and it isn't mentioned in the conditions, but in the staff report it does say that the owner shall maintain the parking in a safe and sanitary manner. And that's the only comment I have.
Okay, that's actually in the ordinance itself, so it, you know, it depends on how you feel. I believe that that's in the ordinance language, and they have to continue to comply with the preferential parking ordinance, otherwise they're not in compliance with their permit, and the privilege could be taken away from them.
Okay, so then that is a point of clarification, so we don't need to pull it from the consent calendar. Thank you.
I have one other just typo. On Manor Road, the very first opening says that it's a 4,202 square foot site, but the rest of the document refers to it as a 3,200 square foot size. So, page two, Manor Road, 136 Manor Road.
And the reference?
The very first reference on the top of the page says 4,202 square foot site, and on the bottom of the-
It's the larger one.
Okay, so in the bottom of the page then, it says-
Yeah, the way that happened is that the assessor has a different square footage, but when we actually check the square footage, it's larger. It's the larger one.
Okay, then page two and page three both reference the parcel, both reference 3,200 square feet.
We'll change it.
So I would just amend that.
This is just a staff report, too.
Yep. Got it, yes, it's-
So the conclusion would be it's the larger number in the staff report.
Okay, if there are no other comments, then we will close the consent calendar, which means that anybody involved in those properties-
No, we have to make a motion.
Okay, Shelley was saying that she was about to make a motion to approve the consent items. I just wanted to explain that once that's done, those properties-
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, just you might want to ask for any public comment on any of the items on consent.
Is there any public comment on the consent items?
Okay, now you can pass.
Okay, having heard no public comment on the consent items, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So I'd make a motion to approve consent item one, two, and three.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, pardon me if I may, you can now tell the audience that if they're here for 116 Scenic, 136 Manor, or 32 Porteeth, they have been approved, and you might want to mention the appeal period.
Our eloquent staff made the announcement. There is an appeal period of 10 days, and I believe the fee is $500, and you appeal to the town clerk. Thank you very much.
You may go home.
Okay, now we move on to the discussion items. And the first one of those is that we're proposing making recommendations as the Planning Commission to the Town Council regarding a pilot program, a pilot parking permit program. So I would entertain a staff report on that program. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I'm Garrett Toy. I'm the town manager. And actually, this item is before you. It comes from back in November 2014. The council considered a petition from the residents of the Inyo Avenue neighborhood asking the council to consider overnight permit parking systems so that it would allow them to park in the evenings and free up spaces in their neighborhood. They had concerns about that. The council discussed this again in December and in February, indicated before they actually consider a pilot, residential pilot parking program, that staff go ahead and try to get as much community input as possible. So what we've done since then is we've actually set up this community engagement forum online, and you can go online and fill out a series of questions, and that's available for everyone to see your responses, and so we're asking people to do that. We sent out almost 240 letters to the area in question, which is actually the Inyo, let's see, that's the Inyo, Mono, Napa, Main, Pacheco, Dominga to Sherman Street area. That would be the potential pilot area, but we expanded it to include the downtown area and forests where we thought people might park there, part of Bellinas and the rest of Dominga. So we sent out about 240 notices to ask people to participate. Earlier this evening, we held what we called a town forum to see if anyone wanted to provide information that way. Had about four people attend, and we also let people know that we would have the item on the Planning Commission, and that they could also comment to the Planning Commission. And since we were doing that, we thought it'd be appropriate for the Planning Commission to go ahead and weigh in, and we could share your comments to the council. We plan to actually agendize this, the first council meeting in April, for discussion. And so that pretty much is the staff report in a nutshell. And for the public, I do have hard copies of the survey if anyone would like to fill them out, and we left some over there, but really, I like to drive people to the town website because they can fill out there, puts it online, everyone can see the comments, and then we're able to kind of produce a report from that information. But with that, that concludes the staff report, and available to answer any questions.
So what's been the feedback that you're receiving from the residents so far?
I think last I checked, we had 15 responses. The basis, I think probably more people said, yes, it'd be, let's try it, as opposed to that said, no. I think I got two comments from the Chamber of Commerce, and hopefully I'll get more comments from the four people that showed up this evening. But I have to say, I was hoping, based on this new community forum, online platform that we created, that we would get more feedback. And so we're really trying to encourage people to comment from a staff perspective. All we want is feedback to the council, and the council can decide. I think as staff, we'll just do whatever the council decides, obviously.
Yeah, I think the questionnaire is excellent. I looked at it myself earlier today, and there are 15 responses that are responses. You know, people really thought about their responses, so, you know, congratulations for putting that up, and it works. I urge everybody to participate if they can.
Was the online forum put up after the last council meeting, or was it up before the council meeting where this was discussed?
We actually created it a week or two after the council meeting.
So I think I was going to commend you. I was very happy to see our town moving towards the 21st century and use of digital technology, so I wanted to say how much I appreciated using that tool. And I think this is a good, while we only have 15, so if you wanted to take a moment to do a public service announcement about that tool, just to help, I mean, if this is the first televised meeting where we're announcing that it's available, seems like it might be a good time to maybe take two minutes or something just to let the viewing audience know what it is that you're talking about online and what we have available, and it is very dynamic, and this, to me, it's a great example of we're not just piloting the pilot parking program, but we have also chosen to pilot an online democracy tool to listen to the public, so.
If my answer, that's actually an excellent idea.
I think it is a good idea, sure.
So maybe to step back, the Town Council actually is considering a residential pilot parking program. It would require a permit for overnight parking. The proposed pilot area is the area that's bounded by Mono, Inyo, Napa, Pacheco, and Dominga to Sherman Street, if you live in that area or you don't live in that area. If you park in that area or you don't park in the area, we're just looking for feedback from the community on the topic. And what the council has done is it's actually created an online community forum, and to comment on that, all you need to do is go to the town website, which is www.townoffairfax.org. Again, that's www.townoffairfax.org. You just go to the right side of the page, click on the community forum, it'll take you right into there. And just as a caveat, how it works is you need to register, and you put in your comments. By registering, it allows us to map whether you're in the area, or in the town, or outside the community. However, I do know for some residents, they prefer not to register, and you could still respond and not register. It would just show your comment as being called unclaimed, and we'll probably send you emails saying, can you come and finish your registration? Now, if that's not an option, then we would say it allows you not to register at all, and it creates a PDF file, and then sends that on to the staff. We also ask people if they like to just send us an email if they only want to do it that way, or just to fill out a hard copy of the survey. But really, for us, this is really our first try at an online community forum, and the thought pattern is people can see responses, and we just, really, it's a pilot, this community forum, and we really want to see how well that works. Granted, this is the first one, but we're giving it a shot, so thank you.
And I was just going to say, one thing that I really liked about it, too, is that you respond, and then it gives you a summary of all the responses, who answered what, I mean, how many people said yes to this, or three to that, or 12, I mean, there's a great summary. You can go through individually and look at who's saying what in a thoughtful way. So I, there's a lot of tools, it's not just information, I think, to the town, but it's a great way of giving information to us community members as well, because we can hear from each other. It's great.
I should have had you do the promo.
I think-
And any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, when we, I guess in terms of the planning research that's out there, these kind of programs can be really effective, so running it as a pilot program to see its effectiveness and efficacy is great. I know we've heard comments from the community ever since Good Earth expanded over there of the parking constraints, so this would give us a more tangible data in which to look at and see where the problem is. One is how many parking, street parking spaces do we have in that area, and how many residents do we think have cars? You know, one of the problems we keep hearing community members say is, well, people aren't using their garages for parking, they use it for storage. So a program like this may encourage some people to start using their garages as parking, and it can alleviate some of the problems. It can generate revenue for the towns, whether or not they want to go that route. And I think it leads itself to the broader area, and I know our planning director has encouraged us to look at the parking issues of downtown parking in general, and I know it's not popular, but paid parking is a really effective way to accommodate all of the demand for our downtown services, both from residents who live here and visitors who come in, park, and spend a lot of time here, and we're not able to accommodate them, and having some kind of parking metered, paid parking tends to increase the turnover in our town, so it can be beneficial.
I just had a question about how it overall works, as you envision it. Residents of this area would buy a permit so they can park overnight. Anybody without a permit would be tagged, or what happens?
So at this point, we're not setting up the program exactly how it would work, but in essence, yes, residents would be, I don't even know if we would charge, but residents would get so many permits per household. There'd be guest permits, and in essence, if you didn't have a permit, then you'd be ticketed between the hours of, say, 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m., if you parked in that location. Typically, when we start a program like that, we usually just do warnings to start with, and then we move on from there, and then try to assess it. It's a pilot program because the interesting thing is, at some point when we move forward with the town center plan, that discussion within it is a component of manage parking for the whole downtown and adjacent areas, and that's when we'll start taking a much closer look. This actually, if the council decides to do it, would give us some data of how well it worked for that area.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other commissioner comments?
So it's a pilot program. How long of a pilot are you looking at, and does it have an auto sunset, or is it a pilot until it's stopped, or how does the pilot part of it end?
We haven't even talked about that yet, so I would envision that since the Planning Commission seems interested, we would come back to you for some ideas about this, and we would probably end up having another survey to talk to the neighborhood about how it works. Really, our recommendation is we keep it as simple as possible because we really don't have the staffing to administer it.
I'd say as a pilot, a six-month window is usually a good place to start.
Yeah, and the good thing is it's a pilot program. It's adjustable, we won't, we'll just kind of change it as we need to, as it goes, so it's a very flexible kind of idea. One more comment from the commission.
I'm curious as to how the hours were arrived at the midnight to 6:00 a.m.
What we did was in the, I believe in the letter we received from the neighborhood, it talked about, you know, midnight to 6:00 a.m., but it could easily be 11:00 to whatever. I think right now, we allow overnight parking in the parque de la Mono, but before, it was no parking between 12:00 or 1:00, I forget. Anyway, 12:00 or 1:00 in the morning, and I think 8:00 is when the four-hour time restriction started, or maybe it's 10:00. Well, I'm not making that particularly clear, but, so we, those are things we'd have to take a closer look at.
Okay, so if there are no more comments from the commissioners, we can open this to the public for comment, please. You need to push the button on the red light-
I can talk a lot enough without this, I think, but I'd like to make a comment on what we're talking about here. I'm one of the Inyo residents that generated the petition to the council to talk to them about the issue, and one of the things that I discussed with Garrett earlier tonight was we had reached an agreement at one of the council meetings that we were going to do the pilot program, and the pilot program involved midnight to 6:00 permitted parking. It also talked about timed parking during the day, either a two-hour or four-hour limit. That wasn't mentioned in the mailer that was sent out, and I just wanted to clarify that that was part of the discussion. That's a major part of it. I think we need to paint the whole picture. And you were asking about why the midnight hour was, how that came about. The discussion regarding that had to do with some of the late-night parking issues that we had in the neighborhood with, how would we say, inebriated patrons coming down, urinating on property, getting sick, altercations, physical altercations, verbal altercations. As we know, in the evening hours, when there's not a lot of noise in town, sound travels even further, and, you know, we've had problems at midnight and thereafter. We had reached midnight as a timeframe because at that time, downtown parking is probably more available as the restaurants are closed. A lot of the businesses that require downtown parking are no longer using it, so now that patrons, if there were late-night patrons at, say, 19 Broadway, or some of the nightclub establishments, could move their vehicles out of the residential areas at a reasonable hour, a way back closer to where they are and out of the neighborhood. So that's how we reached the midnight timeframe. That's what we were looking for there, just for neighbor, you know, quality of life, not having to hear, and put up with some of the issues that we're putting up with. As I was telling one of the people that was here earlier, imagine what it's like on Saturday or Sunday morning when you go out to get your newspaper, and the crows are feeding on vomit that was left on the sidewalk from a patron, a parker, not a neighborhood resident. We found condoms, we found all kinds of stuff in the neighborhood, and we're just, we're fed up, we're tired of it, right? So that's how it came to be, that's how the neighborhood raised the issue. And I know there's only 15 people that have responded to the online survey, but I believe, Garrett, what was the number on the petition that we had of the residents? I think we were in the 30s, 30s.
30s, or something like that.
You know, and that was just the Inyo Avenue residents, so there's definitely some interest in the issue. You know, the fact that there are not a lot of responses online may indicate that people just haven't found that and seen it. So that's it, that's, I just wanted to raise that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
My name is Steve Ardito, A-R-D-I-T-O, Levon, Inyo, 59 years, lifetime resident, third generation Fairfax.
Thank you. Any others on this particular item? Okay, seems that there are no other public comments on this item, so we will close the public hearing for the parking pilot program, and any discussion from the commission?
So I'm gathering from this item, as far as action goes, that it's providing feedback to the council, so we're not really taking a formal action, it's just our comments, and then you take it back at this point.
Right, I mean, if the commission wanted, it's flexibility, if the commission actually wanted to say, take a formal position, you can, that's fine. I mean, the feedback in essence would be that, unless each of the four of you had different feedback.
I'm happy if the pulse is to make a recommendation and make a motion to recommend Town Council adopting a pilot program.
Okay, anybody second? Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to say that we're in support of them doing a pilot program. I feel like there's still so many open and unknowns, I don't think we can say much more unanimously or critical, you know, that we've got a majority vote on any of these particulars. So as long as it's just general yes, I think we should, you should go forward on a pilot program, I'm fine with that, as long as we don't get into the details.
So further comment?
I would just echo what Shelley said. I mean, it seems like it might be a worthwhile thing to explore further, but maybe there's still, I think, some things that need to be worked out, so.
Right, I was a little uncertain about it, but after hearing the gentleman who just testified, I'm solid on this. I think it's a great idea, so I'll entertain a motion.
The only other thing that comes to my mind is it sounds like there's both a parking issue in terms of parking demand and spaces, and there's a community behavior issue in terms of how people are behaving late at night, and that the parking is used as a tool to curb behavior. So the only personal other recommendation or thought that I have is to think about whether parking is the right tool or the only tool to deal with that kind of behavior. I don't, you know, certainly I think a pilot parking, a permit program is the right tool for addressing a parking problem in terms of demand and space allocation, no problem there. Are there other ways to deal with loud people coming out of bars at night, and fights on the street, and those kinds of things, that isn't using parking as that tool, possibly? So that's my only other thought on how to address this. Those are two very different issues that we're trying to address with one solution, so that's my only other comment or thought. It doesn't change whether I would say, yes, we should go forward with it, I think we should.
Okay, well, we will have minutes of this meeting, and then this feedback will go to Town Council, and that's primarily what the idea here is, is to give Town Council feedback. I don't even know if a motion is warranted in this case, but if you have one, we could, what do you think, staff? Do we need to make a motion here?
Yeah, I think you can make a motion, that's fine. I think it's clarification for Commissioner Hamilton is, we did talk to the resident about the issue of what we say is social behavior versus parking. So the parking's treated as a parking issue, the social behavior is something that our police department has addressed. Maybe it's an issue of how often these things happen, but PD is well aware of these things do happen, and has been fairly aggressive in taking action to try to alleviate that situation. I believe that residents also believe that parking will also help in terms of people won't be able to stay out as late because they need to move their car or they'll get a ticket.
Okay, if we have a creative motion, I'll entertain it.
I make a motion that Town Council consider developing a pilot parking permit program and flesh out the details to bring back to the town.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number five, 127 Dominga Avenue.
Okay. The Planning Commission approved a use permit and set back variances to allow the house at 127 Dominga to be lifted to bring the existing basement area living space into compliance with the building code's ceiling height requirements, and to add a full bathroom on March 20th of 2014. The applicants came back in November of 2014 to relocate the laundry area that had previously been contained in the lower living level into what was supposed to remain basement area, and to convert 299 square feet of the remaining 598 square foot unfinished basement into finished-conditioned space that has a 6'8" ceiling heights and windows. Commission originally discussed this project and took testimony from the applicant at the December 18, 2014, meeting. The commission was having difficulty making findings to approve the modification as proposed, and you continued the project to give the applicant's contract- and you continued the project to give the applicant's contractor time to discuss the matter with his client to see if she wanted to modify the project in the hopes that the commission would be able to make required findings to approve a modified design. In order to approve a modification to the use permit, the commission must be able to determine that the proposed modification to the approved plans meets the required use permit findings. And the use permit findings are as follows. The approval of the use permit shall not constitute a grant of special privilege and shall not contravene the doctrines of equity and equal treatment. Two, the development and use of the property as approved under the use permit shall not cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties or premises or cause adverse physical or economic effects thereto. Three, approval of the use permit is not contrary to the objective goals or standards pertinent to the particular case and/or contained or set forth in any master plan or town code. And four, the approval of the use permit will result in an equal or better development of the premises than would otherwise be the case, and that the approval is in the public interest and for the protection or enhancement of the general health, safety, and welfare of the community. The proposed expansion of the residence, the proposal includes expansion of a residence which already has, A, a floor area ratio at the maximum of .40, B, a bedroom and bathroom over a detached garage, C, a lot coverage of 38% when the permitted lot coverage is 35%, C, two bedrooms and now two baths in the main house. The site is also significantly substandard in size at only 3,700 square feet when the minimum required lot size is 5,500 square feet. The site also has substandard parking with only one space provided while the code requires two spaces for a single-family residence. The proposed further improvement of the basement with windows to allow in-air and light, insulation, electrical wiring, and plumbing for the relocated laundry room will increase the capability of the property to more comfortably house additional residents, which will impact the neighborhood parking and increase congestion in an already densely populated and on an overdeveloped site. Staff believes the findings to approve the modification cannot be made, and therefore we're recommending that you deny the requested modification by adopting Resolution 1417, which we have attached to the staff report. You do have a number of letters that you, well, emails that you've received from neighbors supporting the project, and you have them in your packet.
It's actually Resolution 1507.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's Resolution 1507. Oh, yes, you are correct. That would conclude our report.
Any commissioners have comments for staff or questions?
Has any further work or anything been done on the space since it came?
No. No, since the building officials stopped and they stopped.
Have you had, have you had any contact or has the, has the building staff had any contact with the owner to the effect that he's willing to eliminate the windows or, you know, do some of the other things that we're recommending?
No, but he's, they're here. The owner and the contractor are here. You know, we made that, in our letter of action, we made that available to them. And a couple times in emails, I reminded them that they needed to get in an alternative plan if they wanted to submit one, so they didn't. And I'm assuming that meant they wanted to go forward with what they originally proposed, but they're here and they can address that.
Okay. Other commissioner comments? Okay. Would then, would the applicant like to step forward and make some comments? Thank you.
My name is David Grabham, Chief Family Inc. Design. I'm the contractor and designer of 127 Dominga. So going through kind of the process with you guys the last couple months and kind of trying to get our ducks in a row a little bit and do some research on what FAR actually means with the ceiling height and what the use of, or what our intended use of this space would be. Earlier in the meeting, you guys are talking about off-street parking and how people are using their garages as conditioned storage space. Well, right now, my client's garage is full of all her, all her belongings that potentially would be going into her storage facility once it was conditioned, if I could get it conditioned. Obviously, we're kind of at your guys' mercy with the doors and the windows and the electrical. You know, we, we went through the whole process, as I said before, with Mark, and we're kind of under the guidance. We thought of the town. I did go ahead and put the windows in on my own accord, and I don't know if you guys saw the pictures. We tried to send you guys some pictures of the project. In my mind, the windows, we really minimized the windows. I tried to put the pictures in so you could kind of see the space and how they break up the walls and exactly what you would be looking at, which is why several of the neighbors have come forward and asked that we would be able to keep the windows is because I just think that the project's architectural value in the neighborhood, we've done a fantastic job building that project over there and really stepping up the value of the neighborhood and setting a standard of what good craftsmanship should be and hopefully becomes a trend in the neighborhood. But, you know, our intention, obviously, walking Linda through and Mark, the last week, you guys asked us to stop, you know, this got continued for a month because it got reset and I happened to be on vacation. And then unfortunately, the next month, several staff members stepped down or something happened. I'm not quite sure yet what. But, you know, my client has been sitting there with her, half of her project done 100% and half of it not done for the last three months, trying to get this part of this figured out. And, you know, looking at the, the whole deal, it's, it's kind of like a catch-22, you know? We're trying to, we're trying to give her a nice conditioned storage space. We're willing to sign a deed restriction. We're willing to do what you guys asked, but what, what ends up happening is I feel like pulling all the electrical out and pulling the windows out is going to make it an unsafe, uninhabitable place, and we're back to square one with the storage, which means everything stays in the garage, which is what I feel like you guys are trying to avoid. Keeping the ceiling height at six-foot-eight was done intentionally. I could have easily kept the ceiling height at seven-foot-two, which is where we were at, and we brought everything up, as you guys know from our last meeting. So we would like to keep the windows. I think the windows add a great value to the house aesthetically and also make that room much more suitable for, for her needs as a storage facility. Like her garage has a window and plenty of electrical and all that kind of stuff. I just don't see this being, I mean, I know in your mind, it's a big deal and a big issue, and you feel like we're really trying to push the envelope on storage. That wasn't the intention at all, or FAR. You know, our intention was to give her a nice storage space that, that works for her So I don't really know where to go from here because, you know, we would like to keep the windows. We would like to keep the electrical. We would like to keep the lighting. To me, those are things for safety and ventilation and not, you know, I could see if it had a high ceiling height and was going to be counted into FAR and sold, that's something that could be counted as square footage, but when she goes to sell the place, it's not going to be square footage either. She's going to sell it as a storage room. So, you know, I don't, I don't know where else to go from here. Do you guys have any, any questions for me that I can answer now instead of talk about it and then come back up over and over again? I would rather try to get this out of the way here. Yeah.
So there was no alternat, I mean, no alternatives that you're coming, I mean, I'm a little perplexed. There's no alternatives that you're coming forward with like, well, we really want to prioritize the windows, so we'll give up the electrical.
Sure.
Or any ideas or problem solving? I mean, I went back over the notes that we had, and those were, I mean, there was some, there was a lot of different things that we talked about, and we continued it on purpose with the intent to, with the intent, with the understanding and the intent that it was to give you an opportunity to do some brainstorming and some problem solving. We gave lots of ideas for you, and so I'm just wondering why you're coming back before us without?
No, I actually did a tremendous amount of research back into the code, talked to several different city planners, talked to San Anselmo, talked to Sausalito, all projects where we've done a lot of these projects, and they've actually allowed us to do, to condition spaces like this under seven feet. And even in Fairfax, we have a project, we did this year with the exact same circumstance where we conditioned a space that was actually attached to a second unit that could have easily been developed, but went ahead and got the permit because it never went to planning. So we did a tremendous amount of research like that. You know, I'm at your discretion anyways, so whether you, whether I want to pull back the project or where I want to leave it, it has nothing to do with what I want. It has to do with what you guys are going to let me do. So if I say, yeah, I'm willing to compromise the windows, what does that mean? I mean, if you guys say you can only have one window, then I can only have one window. There is no compromise for me because this is what I want. This is what you're going to give me. That's the bottom line. So if you guys say I get one plug and one light and one window, that's what I get. There's no compromise, though. So I'm, I'm at your mercy. My client Krishna is at your mercy. We're hoping that you read the letters. We're hoping that you looked at the pictures and you're taking all the stuff that we put in front of you into consideration, and that's what we gave you, is this stuff from the surrounding neighbors that actually live in that area. We went and talked to all of them. They're all on board. They think we did an incredible job on that project, and they don't want to see those windows go because they know what it'll look like. So I feel like we did give you guys a bunch of information. It's in your hands to decide what you want to do with the information. Linda's talking here about what the public wants. That was the first three sentences she said, what the public wants. That's what you guys are here for. Well, there's your letters right there. I mean, it can't be more simple than that. You talk about health and safety. Well, health and safety is ventilation and lighting and electricity. I don't know how else to put it. You put one light in there, someone trips and falls down the stairs, that's on you guys, not on me, because you guys decided that there should only be one light. So I'm kind of at your mercy. You know, I'm asking you for everything. You're going to give me what you feel comfortable with, and I really appreciate all your help and, and, you know, I have a lot of respect for you guys, but I can't make that decision, so.
Okay. Well, you're, you're, you're right. I mean, we have, we have some discretion. We don't have total discretion, though. We have to go by what the floor area ratio ordinance says. We have to go by what the ceiling height says. And we also want to discourage the illegal living units that have popped up.
Sure.
So those, those are some of the, you know, reasons for this, and that's, it's because of the laws that are here. And yes, we have some discretion within that, but we do have to adhere to that. And this is a very small lot. It's a very small unit, and it's, if you're going to be selling it as a storage area, it doesn't really need a lot of windows, and the placement of the light near the stairs or not is seems to me a choice that can be made. So any, any other commissioners have comments?
We have questions. Questions of the applicant?
And I offer just some history on similar projects. 305 SCENIC, that was before the commission. I don't know if you were all on the commission, but it was very similar. He was required to remove the windows, remove the electrical, and lower the ceiling height to six feet because he had taken an area under the house that on the plans was shown to remain underfloor area and conditioned it and made it, put electrical in and added windows. So.
If you're done with the applicant, that you relieve him and ask for any public comments and then bring it back for deliberation.
Yes. Thank you for your comments, and I will call for public comments now on this application, please.
Hi. My name is Krishna. I happen to be the owner of 127 Dominga, and it isn't just a conditioned storage space with boxes. I have art and antiques in there. Linda, I know you and I have spoken about this, and you've actually been on the property and have seen this. My garage right now has everything that would go into that space, and the garage itself has at least three windows. It's, it's very well lit. It has a lot of light. And I historically, I've parked in there, and right now I have my car parked on the sidewalk. Parking's a big issue in Fairfax, and I'd like to go back to parking in my garage and be able to use my house and the storage space as it was intended to be used. I'm certainly willing to remove some of the lighting. It's, again, a conversation that we have had. But I think that for the antiques that are being stored in there currently in my garage, that having light that can be controlled and where I won't need to run electrical light constantly to have things set in certain light is imperative.
Can I ask you?
If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one question. These antiques and artworks, are you, are you displaying them for any reason? It's like they're going to be some kind of gallery or sales of them there or something?
Not currently. They're things I've inherited. They're family heirlooms.
So I would consider that this, this witness is the applicant as well. So now I will call for any other public comment. Dismiss, dismiss the applicant. Thank you. Okay. There seems to be no other public comment, then I will ask for a discussion among the staff, us here on the commission.
Okay. I'm having a hard time with this one. So when we look at the use permit findings, I think one of the challenges we have, which I keep sounding like a broken record every time, is that we have lots that were zoned long ago, before any of us were here, that we have legal non-conforming situations, we have substandard lots, we have lots of things that are in place because zoning that was done 30 years ago, and the uses that we have now don't quite mix, and that's something that we need to discuss in the general plan. We can't do sort of piecemeal zoning. And so I understand the concern with SCENIC. I think there's, there's been issues where we've given use permits because lot sizes aren't big enough for the developments that's there because the zoning has been done in place that constrains these. And I, I'm looking at this one, falling into a lot of those where use permits have been granted by the commission. And so if we look at the use findings, the approval of the use permit should not grant special privilege. That's kind of our gray area. Is it special privilege because now this space is going to be usable, livable space and not storage space? So that's where I hear the concerns being greatest. So if there's a way to get the project to go without that special privilege, that takes care of that one. Number two, not causing detriment to neighboring property, seems like the project as is, doesn't cause detriment to neighboring properties. And the letters from the neighbors supporting that they like the aesthetics of it is improving the condition of the property. Condition three, are we going against anything set forth in the master plan that would deny approval? And then condition four, that results in equal or better development of the property, which it does. So I, I look at what's in place, and I see the concerns that we have, and we don't want to set precedence for everybody to be changing basement storage into living space. The deed restriction, I think, is one way in which we could have that in place. We don't conform to parking as our way that we can get a second parking spot on the property in any.
You'd have to ask the applicant if she was willing to give up some of her yard space for a parking area.
So parking space.
It definitely physically.
It definitely physically can be done, but she'd have to cut her fence and give up some of her landscaping.
So, I guess where we are with minor modifications, if any, I think we fall into the required use permit findings.
I agree that it's in our and the public's interest to try and work with applicants the best we can to meet their needs. I don't quite go with falling within those. And when I looked back on our conversation last time, a lot of it was around the increase in the FAR. That had it been raised to the seven level, it was FAR, it would trigger parking, you know, there were these other things. It was brought down under that, thinking it would keep it as not counting towards it in some respects. We talked about... I'm struggling because we spent a lot of time talking about alternatives and options and lighting and we got nothing. We got no extra parking spaces. We got... We didn't get any assistance in our efforts to do some brainstorming. I also think that as a commission, we have a... You know, we're not... As much as I completely, totally trust and honor the current resident owner's use of the space and desire to use it, and I believe you totally, we have to think about the next owner and the next owner and the next owner because buildings last longer than we do and our community is larger than just that building. And so we have to take a broader perspective and a longer-term perspective. And so, one thing and things that I think is one of the most difficult things for us is to look at our decision in a way that doesn't make the applicant feel like, "Oh, we really don't trust you and we think you're trying to sneak something over on us." I don't think that's the case here at all. But I think currently the way that it's proposed, to me, is not acceptable because the next user or the next user or the next user could use it in a way that it wasn't intended by the current user and would impact the community and would impact the parking. So, the development, you know, will not cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties. Well, as a storage space, no. As another living space or another bedroom, yes. So, that's where it's like, yeah, as a storage space, no. I think you're right. But it very easily could be turned into even just another bedroom, not an illegal unit. We came up with some ideas with the lighting. I like the windows on the outside aesthetically. And the letters that we got were all about the external aesthetics of the windows. The windows look great on the outside. But it didn't address the volume of the intensity of use should it turn into living space. Should the next person decide to use the garage as the storage space, which you don't want to use, which is fine, next owner could say, "Hey, look, there's a whole garage. I'm going to use that for storage, park on the street, and I've got a whole other bedroom." So that's the kind of things I think that we have to look at. And that... Those are the kinds of conversations we had when this came up last time. And we were pretty unanimous and pretty clear that the FAR and the use of it was just not okay. That's why we continued it, because we wanted to work with the applicant and come back with some other solution that didn't make them take the windows out. So, you know, we're presented here with dropping the height to six feet of the ceiling. There's option for, you know, on the far end of the spectrum, leave it unfinished, wrap it in plastic and stick in a swamp cooler. You know, if you want to have storage, it's stick a swamp cooler, air conditioner in it and wrap, you know, plastic to protect things. I know that's not what you want, obviously, but, you know, I'm... But I hope you also see that we continued it last time to try and work with you. We didn't deny it last time because we wanted to work and try and make it work. So, we continued it to try and work with you. We came up with ideas and it's frustrating to not have anything back. So now we can choose to just say, "Forget it. We're going to deny it. You didn't come with anything. It's not worth our time to deal with it." Or we can look and try and find deed restriction, lower the ceiling height, restrict the electricity and the lighting. You can still use it as storage. You can plug in a swamp cooler. Those are the kinds of things I'm thinking because we're going to have to brainstorm on our own.
Okay, well, my comment is that even the denial of a permit, you know, this permit doesn't preclude you from coming back with another request or another permit. I mean, you know, last time I think we had an idea of have one light and no windows. Maybe after some of this discussion, you could come back with an idea with one window. The problem is, we need to have staff and the commission informed about what the plan is. And even though you may take on installing electric or windows, as you said yourself, we just don't want to be surprised with what we get because we have these rules we have to adhere to. Any other comments?
I've just... Sure. Sure. As I said last time, it's the windows that are, I think, the issue for me. We've already... The ceiling height is less than seven feet. And it would have been better if it wasn't finished. I mean, it has sheet rock. Is that what... I don't remember exactly.
There's no sheet rock.
Oh, yes. Well, it's not bare framing.
There's no shears, bare framing.
Well, I saw... There was a whole... There were solid walls of something.
There's a plywood shear wall down in there.
Okay, there you go. There you go. So there's a plywood shear wall separating the rest of the remaining basement from the... But no, there's no sheet rock yet.
Okay. Well, I think it's the windows that could make it... Make the problem for the future. I think that's really what staff is worried about, that the wind... Having the windows there is what makes it maybe want to be a finished space in the future. So that's why I thought my suggestion with the one window was a good compromise because there was one window there before, but that it's the two extra that are on the side is really what I have an issue with.
Could staff address the commissioner's comments of, is it... Are the windows a pivotal thing or... I mean, you had in here lowering the ceiling heights. We talked about electrical and lighting, you know, insulation or no insulation, conditioning. Are there other...
Yeah, we had given you an alternative recommendation if you felt you were able to make the findings to approve the space. And we wanted the ceiling heights in the basement storage. What did we say? If you were going to try to keep the windows, lower the ceiling heights to six feet. Schedule an inspection with staff of the bedroom and bath over the garage to ensure that the area does not meet any of the qualifications to be considered an unpermitted second living unit. Submitting as-built plans. And then we had forgotten, you'd also want a deed restriction. You know, our preference is that the project was built the way it was approved originally. That's our preference. Then there were no issues.
I personally agree with that preference. Are we ready to entertain a motion?
So, this commi... If we deny it, they can come back in with an alternate permit or what happens next?
Yeah, they can appeal to the council or they can come in and turn in an alternative application.
Sir, can I ask one more thing real quick because we're not wasting each other's time?
No more continuances. Right, you have to take action because we're running out of... At the end of the Permit Streamlining Act.
Right. Well, we seem to have... We seem to have a mixed feeling on the commission at the moment. But I would say that the future is what weighs heavily, you know, is some of the comment about maybe the neighborhoods aren't affected, but they really could be in the future. And that's the kind of the issue. And it's not a good parking scene in that area either. So we just have to be kind of cautious, I think. So if anybody else doesn't have comments, I would like to ask for a motion on this application.
Can I make a comment so that my resubmitment isn't kind of a wasted time? Just to get some clarification from you guys?
Well, we have closed applicants' comments and public comments on this application. It's already continued. We can't do that again. So, okay, we have a question from the commission.
If he waives his Permit Streamlining Act?
Uh, no, they can only grant a 190-day extension. We're already, because of the lack of a quorum and everything. But I do think if...
Do you want to hear?
I do think if he wants to propose some kind of compromise at this point...
Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, just don't want to...
You might want to hear his compromise because it might be something that...
Okay.
You can hear it if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, well, at staff's recommendation, then come on up and give us your further comments.
Thank you very much. I just would like to get some clarification so I don't try to resubmit for a permit and then repeat this process. Can I start with the windows real quick first? When we talked last time, your guys' recommendation was to cut it down to one window. And I'm just wondering what size, you know, how do I know where to go without a little bit of direction? Is there a window that's there existing that you feel comfortable with keeping? Is it... Sorry, Shelley. Go ahead.
A couple of things. There wasn't... If you look through the minutes from... What I would suggest for resubmitting, if you want guidance, would be to go through our minutes or watch from... Watch our conversation from last time and this time. It'll give you a lot of specifics because I went through back through our minutes and we did have a lot of specific recommendations. The window, there was an existing window previously that we discussed. It was a small square window somewhere. And more importantly, if you're looking for guidelines, I mean, I've heard, if you look in the minutes again...
I've watched the video like seven or eight times.
Great. Again, the issue is not the intent of your client right now, but the potential future use of the space. So, coming back, if you're going to come back with another application and you want more certainty that it's going to be allowed, one, if you don't have any variances required, then it wouldn't come before us. But we're just concerned about it not being used as living space, otherwise a bedroom, which could mean another car or another unit. So, you definitely would need to come back with...
Mr. Chair? Can I ask you to... I don't know if we found that existing window, but can you show... Can you show us the window that's there now that was there before?
Who's handed it? He's asking us.
Which one is it?
The window's gone. It's not there anymore.
Oh, it isn't.
So, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the owners or the applicant's representative, you know, wanting to get some direction if he was to come back in. I caution you, though, that it's a different... It's a difficult question to answer because we don't want to give you false hope that anything would pass. There's four people here tonight. We have a seven-person commission. It'll be filled up pretty soon.
Okay.
It's... There's no guarantees that would happen. We are, you know, available anytime to sit down with you. We don't make the decision, they do. And if it's appealed, the council does. But we try to help applicants navigate through the code.
You're right.
And so, the unfortunate situation in this was, it was, you know, it wasn't built as planned. And so we're trying to correct things after it's gone, what we call mission creep, beyond what was intended. And so you're trying to put the genie back in the bottle and that's been a difficult exercise. So it appears that we're sort of at an impasse on you wanting to build it beyond what was approved before. But I would just caution you with offering too much guarantees, but you're welcome to come back in and work with us and discuss things with us.
So potentially, it may not even go to the planning department if I can work with you guys and...
No, no, that's not the case. I can't say that with certainty at all. In this case, because of the code and what is a, you know, the FAR is the FAR, you may be up against the wall, but we could maybe help revisit some of the direction they've given in the past and sit down with you and discuss it. What we think might fly or what might gain staff support at any rate. We'd be glad to do that with you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are we prepared to make a motion at this point? Thank you.
So, I would make a motion to deny application. 14-46.
Second?
By adopting Resolution 15-07.
By adoption of Resolution 15-07.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Come on back. We're here to help.
But you might remind him about his... Their appeal, their appeal rights.
The appeal is 10 days to the town council and it's a $500 fee. And now we're moving on to the next item. Which is number six, 164 Willow Avenue, Application 14-47.
Okay, this project was originally reviewed and discussed by the Planning Commission at their January 15th, 2015 meeting. At the meeting, public testimony was given on the proposed project. The commission discussed it, asked questions, and then took action to continue the project while also directing the applicants to provide them or consider the following. One, provide a peer review of the arborist report. And that was to look at if there was a way, if moving... Relocating the house closer to the front property line would allow enough room around tree 22, which is an oak, mature oak tree, to maintain its health and allow it to not be removed. The arborist was also supposed to look at the oak trees on the neighbor's property and also review the original arborist report and see if she can... Agreed with all his conditions or recommendations for tree removal, pruning, et cetera. The peer review made the determination that relocating the house could save tree 22. So the applicants moved the house closer to the property line. In doing so, they had to apply for a parking variance because the guest parking stall had to be shifted parallel to the street instead of being in tandem with only one of the spaces, which they did do. They applied for the parking variance. They included planting beds along the driveway retaining walls, which also were lowered in height by moving the house closer to the property line. And they're proposing planting the... Planting beds with vines. They provided a clear plan for construction vehicles visiting the site and how they were going to get their employees to the property until the parking was created. And that's attached to the staff report. They explained the impacts of further narrowing the house by two feet to meet the combined 20-foot side setback. You know, it would narrow the garage. They'd have to redo the floor plan. In order to keep the same square footage, they would probably have to move further back or try to add square footage in some alternative manner. So, we believe they did what the Planning Commission requested and we were able to make findings for the new parking variance that they're asking for. And we incorporated the findings into a revised Resolution 1416. And we're recommending that you approves... Approve the proposed project as revised by adopting Resolution 1416. Oh, and the planning director wanted me to also reiterate that this house has greater side yard setbacks than many of the homes in the neighborhood. So, it exceeds the minimum required side setbacks the way it's designed now. So, that would... Right.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Oh, and I just... Sorry, I just want to make sure that you know that a neighbor did submit a letter and some photographs, which I was unable to email you, but I was able to... He submitted enough copies, so you have the photos in front of you.
Yes, we have these... Yes, we have these eight by ten color glossies. They're very good, actually. Thank you. Any, any, I have a, I have a comment if nobody else has one at, at the moment. One thing I, I think tree number twenty-two is safe on this new plan, correct? And I think that they moved their entire house up to, to do that. And apparently, we have a benefit in the front retaining walls, that they're shorter. So, that's, that's a great, a great thing. There's, there's only one comment I'd like to make, and that is that there's a, in, in the family construction design letter, which is exhibit B, there's a mention that law, on page two at the top, that large amounts of excavation would take place after nine AM to allow residents to leave the area. That doesn't appear to be a condition at the moment, but I would request that that could possibly be an added condition under the construction parameters part of the, of the resolution.
What page is that on?
Well, the comment is on pay, is on the back of the Family Construction Inc. Design, exhibit B, February twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen. And then, the construction conditions are. Actually, it's probably, it's the bottom of four on the top of the second page. Where it says that the large amounts of excavation take place after nine AM. That's a great idea, and I think it should be a condition, that's all. For, for example, it could be under condition five A, it could just be another bullet point.
Okay. We'll put it in as five, how about five G? Oh, I see what you mean, another bullet, got it, okay. That they comply with their, their construction plan that they submitted.
Right, although I might kind of word it as construction can take place nine AM to six AM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Nine AM to four PM Saturday. And that there would be no removal of excavation materials before nine AM any day. And that's partly because of the structure of the neighborhood. Willow's along, that, that house is quite a way on Willow from Sir Francis Drake and, and it's sort of circuitous to get out the other, the other way.
I have a question about excavation.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I might add, not only were the retaining walls lowered, but the whole house was lowered two feet.
Follow-up question to that. Was there a notation, was the total estimated excavation volume reduced?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so significantly reduced, it was still.
Well, not significantly, but you know, yeah, you're pushing further, less.
Right.
Far into the hillside it comes down.
So, it was reduced. And that was one of the concerns, was the volume of excavation. So, by moving it forward, we've all, not only dealt with the tree, but we've also lowered the height of the retaining walls and reduced the amount of excavation.
And lowered the construction cost.
Any, any further discussion or questions for staff? Okay, then, members of the public are invited to.
Actually, the applicant first.
Oh, the applicant first, please, yes.
You guys thought you were rid of me, huh?
I'm glad businesses will.
Hopefully, this one goes better. Again, we worked very hard. I'm from Fairfax, I love Fairfax. We work very hard to keep a community home. We didn't maximize the floor area ratio on this. It's only sixteen feet wide. Our applicant, Kalman, is a family man and dreamed of living in Fairfax where he grew up, and this was how he thought he could do it. He asked me to help him design and build a, a small home for his wife and his soon-to, soon-to-have-a-kid. And I think that, you know, we worked with Linda extensively on how this should go through planning and got a lot of great advice from her. And just tried to really fit inside your guys' parameters. Tried to give the, the front of the house a lot of nice shape, so you weren't looking at a big straight wall. And give the sides a little pop-outs and some nice decoration with the, the arbors. We initially didn't want to go back the twenty feet, but trying to fit inside the code of what you guys set forth, that was where we started. So, I just feel like this is a perfect project for Fairfax. I feel like this is a standard home in Fairfax. And, and, you know, we tried to keep in mind the neighbors on both sides and stay within the setback. Unfortunately, that leaves us with a sixteen-foot wide house. And in order for us to get stairs in a kitchen, side by side, with the way that the stairs are, there's no way for us to shrink less than sixteen feet. I don't think that, I don't think that we're asking for too much in this project. And, and like I said, aesthetics is, I, I want to build beautiful projects. That's what I do, that's what I love to do. That's why I became a designer and a contractor. And I think that this just fits the neighborhood. I know that, you know, the grade was a little, five percent more than we had initially thought, which caused us to dig back into the hill and, and bumped up the construction costs, like you said. So, for us to move it forward was actually beneficial for, for all of us. There's beautiful trees on the property and keeping the property's integrity was part of our plan going in with Kalman, not to push the house too far back and, and take out some of those beautiful oaks back there. And not ask for too much because we, we know that you guys are taking a lot of, you know, steps to ensure that Fairfax stays a small, beautiful community that it is. So, I don't have much to say other than that, but if you guys have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
I don't have any questions, but my comment, I remember our January meeting and all the input that we had from the community on that. And I think you did a fantastic job addressing the commission concerns and the neighbor concerns and the softening of the driveway and the moving to the front. I think you just, you did a fantastic job.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, it's the, it's the rare builder who would consider moving a whole house forward to save a tree. Thank you for doing that.
Shelby Lamont would be happy.
I'm from Fairfax, what can I say? Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you. So, any members of the audience that have a, a comment on this project, please?
Good evening, Richard Holland, and I live two properties north of the proposed construction. And I'd like to point out a couple of things. I think the, the builders you mentioned, they have done a good job of trying to accommodate to the lot. And I've spoken with the, the neighbors. And I think one thing we need to consider, since this is the last lot to be developed on Willow, that, and I'm a real estate professional, the lot does not measure the forty feet in width that it shows on the deed. And it's not that the other lots encroached on this property, it's that from Sir Francis Drake to Upper Ridgeway, once everything was built, the land doesn't exist. You know, the lot's all, all built. So, there's five, six, seven feet that this property is short. And the existing structures, I believe, have all been permitted by Fairfax. It's not that they're someplace they shouldn't be, it's where they've always been for forty years or however long the fence and staircase and the, and the property above. So, unfortunately, the new owner of this lot is going to have to build within a smaller envelope. And I don't think anybody really opposes that something be built there. There are different ways to do it. But I think primarily granting a variance, it's already, even if it fits within the current allowed zoning, it's going to be closer. And if there are no lawsuits and back and forth with the, the neighbors, if they just build what they're planning to build, it's going to be actually closer to the neighbors than what it, you know, they had hoped because their lot is less wide than they thought that they had. And so, granting a variance, especially with the setbacks on the side, is just going to have the building a few feet away from them. So, it'd be great if they could actually figure out a way to do it without the variance and all let the, the adjacent neighbors talk about the impact that that would have on them. But, you know, just viewing this, I, I realize that the work and what we will endure, you know, have to go through to have it built, it'll be a few months. And thank you for the consideration, starting at nine AM. And so far, as a question, if that would be seven days a week, I think it, they talked about allowing them to do that seven days a week. And I don't know if we could have at least one day where construction would be at rest. So, those are, are my comments, and I hope that we could find a way to, to fit it in here to everyone's best, you know, what works out best. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other public comments on this project?
All right, I'm Liz Harris, I live next door, one sixty Willow Avenue. You heard from me. Okay, you heard from me at the last meeting, so I'm just going to briefly just read through my letter. As you know, we raised several objections to the proposal at the January planning commission meeting. And I appreciate that a few of those concerns have been addressed. I read Nadia's peer review of the arborist report. And also, I appreciate that they are willing to relocate the house closer to the street to save the heritage oak. So, I'm just going to go over the remaining issues. The biggest one for us is the boundary dispute. They did do a survey by, their severe is from South Lake Tahoe, and he's not local. And the survey maintains that both properties to the north and the south encroach on the boundaries. I think this goes back to what Rick is saying, you know, that they actually have less footage than they thought they did, I think. And, you know, they are still requesting the side setback. And I do understand in talking to one of the, his, his associates, Ryan, that the house was rejiggered a little bit, too. So, now, it's actually, he said it's eleven feet from the contested property line on our side and seven feet on the north. Before, it was ten on the north and eight on the south. So, that's my understanding of the new proposal. And like I say in my letter, it was troubling to us to all of a sudden discover after a fence has been there for longer than we've owned the property, and we own the property for thirty-four years, that it, you know, no one's ever contested the placement of the fence. And, you know, all of a sudden, we're told that our property line is off by anywhere from three feet to, it's more like five or five feet down at the bottom. I've always gone out there and maintained the property within the fence line. I've been pulling Scotch room from that property ever since we, it was covered when we first bought it. And we do reserve the right to have a survey done. We have not done that yet. I also have a copy, I brought it with me, I'm sure you're not interested in looking at it, but of the building permit we got in nineteen eighty-nine, which shows we remodeled our house a little bit. And it does have, the house is being located twenty-two feet from the boundary line where our fence is, and no one ever contested that either. I had a question about the mitigation measures for the oak trees on our property. We understand that the applicant is responsible for taking mitigation measures. And my husband is going to raise a few concerns about if those mitigations are done, measures are done improperly, you know, would they step up and take responsibility for that? But I also, if you read the peer arborist report, on her second page, she talks about, you know, if during excavation, they, you know, uncover some, there's some root damage and they should do this and they should do that. And I was wondering, who is going to monitor the site when the excavation is underway to make sure that any further mitigation measures that she talks about are actually taken? So, I thought maybe you want to require that somebody, I don't know who that would be, but some arborist or be there. I mean, I don't know how you'd work that out, but that was one big question I had. Another question I had was in the initial arborist report by Dan McKenna, he mentions that some of the crowns of our trees should be thinned out. And we're requesting, well, first of all, he doesn't specify which trees. Our trees are all healthy. I, I do have an arborist come out every year, check them. He sprays them for the, with agrophos for sudden death. They're all healthy. Who would decide which trees are thinned out? Who would pay for it? We think the, the applicant should pay for it. We think we should be able to agree and pick an arborist to do the work if there is any thinning. And that one of us be able to be present when that thinning, if it is done, and that's what he's recommending, is done. As far as privacy issues, we think, you know, since they are requesting a variance for the side setback, if they get that variance and this project is approved, that their, their southern view is our house. By moving it down, it's directly pretty much next to our house. So, we would request that the one window on the main floor of the house be opaque rather than clear, and that the two windows upstairs be clear story windows. So, they're not, I mean, we have windows facing their house. We're not going to take out our windows that have been there forever. And, you know, we can put blinds in, but point is, we think that with a few simple design changes, we could have a measure, some little measure of privacy, and they could, too. As for fencing, it doesn't address fencing at all. I don't know if the applicant has any plans to put in a fence around his property. But I, I do ask that, you know, if he does want to put in a fence, that he would put in perhaps an open fence rather than a solid wood fence, and that way, you could put plantings and just, it wouldn't be a big wall, you know, of fencing. But I have no idea whether he's intending to do that or not. It's not really addressed at all. And I don't know if this is the time to address it or not, but I thought I'd toss it out there. That's basically it. My husband will comment more about a few other things, but we do appreciate that it's a small house. If there weren't these boundary disputes, we wouldn't be speaking so much about it. You know, we'd probably just be asking for, you know, the higher windows and, but, but we do have these concerns, so that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Victor Harris, and my comments are handwritten to supplement what my wife has heartfully drafted and summarized to you. Oh, sure. That's better. Should I start all over again? You heard me, okay, great. First, I'd like to address the boundary dispute. As I mentioned at the January meeting, I'm a lawyer, and I've got a document for you. I didn't make a lot of copies. I'll get a lot of copies for you. But if you could share one grant deed to our property and the issues could, so you could get to.
So, so you're giving us some copies of your grant deed?
Yes, I've just given the commissioners and the planning commission copies of the grant deed to the property commonly known as one sixty Willow Avenue. The second page of which describes what our property is. Now, I have two comments on the boundary dispute. The first is that the. The first is that the survey or map that the applicant did in 2014 cannot magically change the 1907 map on which our property description is based, is specifically based on a map filed March 30, 1907. And so therefore, although we don't believe at this point that the proposal should be approved for good reasons, if it is approved, we request that it be approved by a document that's signed by the applicant that says, and has an express statement, that the property description on our deed of trust, on our deed, we don't owe any money on the property at all, on our, on our deed, is not affected whatsoever. It remains unaffected. Second, under California law, it's well established that adverse possession, and we've been in possession for more than 30 years, statutory period of time is five years, we've had that fence on that property since for those five, for those 30 some odd years, and it was there when we bought the property in 1981. So therefore, in addition to the foregoing statement, that our deed is not affected by the map that was created in 2014 by the applicant, that also, if the proposal is approved, there be a statement saying that our adverse possession rights are reserved concerning 160 and 164 Willow Avenue, even if the applicant's 2014 survey does not affect the description in our grant deed. We appreciate the measures or the provisions that have been taken with respect to the two oak trees on our property, mitigation measures for the two oak trees on our property. However, we all know that sometimes things go awry. And therefore, in any, that, of course, whatever mitigation measures are undertaken are at the expense of the applicant, but also that if there are any damages, losses or costs, and attorney's fees that are incurred or caused by such measures that are done improperly, we have a right to recover them. And finally, we're also appreciative of the vegetation fuels measures and that management plan, but there's no, and it makes reference to several trees, but there are no specific trees mentioned. And of course, the same damage can occur with requests to, with attempts to implement that plan. So even if the proposal is approved, we're entitled to an express statement in the approval that the applicant and all successors to 164 Willow Avenue shall pay all damages, losses, costs, and attorney's fees caused by or related to the plan, which are improperly undertaken. That's all we're asking. If they're, if they're improperly undertaken, it's damage to our property, and it's a fair, those are fair requests. So for all of the reasons that we've presented, we believe that the proposal should not be approved, but if it is, then those ameliorative provisions be included in any approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on, like to comment on this property? Okay. Oh, yes, thank you.
Ruth Horn, 11 Upper Ridgeway, which is further above the property. There was supposed to be somebody from the Open Space Committee here tonight. I'm on the Open Space Committee, but I'm speaking as a neighbor. They couldn't come because of other Open Space meetings. So this originally was on the Open Space agenda as far as a property that was of interest to Open Space because it's connected, of its connectivity and the wildlife corridor and the trees. And we appreciate that you've taken some of these things into concern and changed them. I'm wondering about the other property owner as well as the Harrises, because they had expressed that their encroachment also, which I think was, the way it was expressed to them was a little harsh. They talked about the adverse possession that they've had since they purchased the property, I'm not sure when, but I think it was before the Harrises moved in. And so they have not been consulted, as I understand it, talking with people, maybe it was the tenant that even gave the properties. I don't know how the noticing goes, if it goes to the property owner as well as the people who inhabited, habit the areas. And if this is approved, I'm wondering what length of time it would take to build? I mean, is it going to go start and stop, start and stop? Is there enough funds? I mean, we know what happened on Sir Francis Drake when money ran out with that property in San Anselmo, and how long that took. And we don't need that in our quiet little neighborhood, which will not be quiet. I certainly lived through Rick Hollins' earthquake, and he was not the owner at that time, but everything that happened with that property, the excavation that was so early. And we appreciate that it's going to be at least a little later, and that they'll check the times that they are working. So thank you.
Thank you. And we have further, further comments. Thank you. By the way, you're not legally required to give your name, I mean, if you feel like it, you can.
I'm happy to. Todd Stotts, 169 Willow, I'm across the street from the proposed project. Could you please reiterate the hours of construction that you had recommended? Because I believe you said 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., and for the record, I'd just like it 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Right. Okay, those are actually, that, the, there's a note from the developer recommends no excavation before 9:00 a.m.
Great. And then also, I'd like to support Rick's suggestion of no construction on Sunday. We have one day off a week. I think that would be very considerate of the neighbors and just something that's very civil. So hours on the weekend, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is what was recommended, and then would suggest having one day off on the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's David Massey, I reside at 170 Willow, right next door to the property, and I actually did submit the letter, hopefully it's the one you referenced with the photos of the trees and the wildlife there, and that's my main concern. I would like to note, however, that there's been a lot of discussion about the width of the property being less than it may be represented on the deeds, which is probably the case, but also, as you've heard, there are boundary disputes on both sides. One of the sides has an obvious claim of adverse possession of many, many years of fence line. I reside on the next side and know the owner sent a letter basically stating that their survey shows that the walkway to the home encroaches on their property and should be removed. That also has been there for many decades, and if anything, is an easement by necessity and probably by prescription, there's no way to access the property with that. And I guess the point being there is that as small as the lot may be, we have issues on both sides in terms of whether the land even can be used as indicated, which may make it even more narrow than has been discussed. But my main point was, in sending the letter and providing the photos, is that, as you noted, your main concern is for the future of the neighborhood or the community, and that is to try to preserve what is there in terms of this beautiful oak forest, if you will, and the wildlife that use it and have for decades. And I think it was pointed out, this is the last existing lot, and I witnessed personally, I took all those pictures in the last year or so, for no particular reason, not anticipating this, it's been a thoroughfare for dear, in and out of the San Anselmo Open Space, which is connected to the property, that's the only way they come into the, into the surrounding neighborhood, and I anticipate they will continue to do that as they have done for generations. Whether they're jumping over fences now or what, I don't know, because since the framing of the anticipated structure has gone up, they've pretty much disappeared. And that's the only point I wanted to make. It's symbolized on the town motto there, and the picture that that's the kind of community that this is, and that's what this stands for to me. And I thought, I'm glad that you have that, and that you will also hopefully consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, are you, are you commenting as a member of the public or as the applicant here?
I just wanted to answer some of their questions. It seemed like some of them were kind of directed toward me. If they want answers, I...
Probably what will happen is the commissioner will discuss it, and if they have questions for you, they'll ask you the questions. They may ask questions of staff, that staff's going to say some of the things you probably are going to say, such as there is a recorded survey and that kind of thing. Or you can, right, you could allow him to speak if you wanted to.
I don't mind if you want to just, you know, have a couple, a couple minutes, yeah, sure.
Just a couple of things. So we thought no excavation before 9:00 would keep the traffic flow. Work will probably start at 8:00 still, but they won't be using the machines, and they won't be, obviously guys will be getting to work before then. We don't work Saturdays or very rarely work Saturdays, so, and definitely not Sunday. I don't even know that you can work Sunday here. And then we actually, the issue with the neighbors on the uphill side retaining wall, I believe we submitted a support letter from them. Kalman was nice enough to say, hey, don't worry about this for now, when everything needs to be replaced down the road, then maybe you can put your retaining wall on your property and move your stairs over to your property. So we actually did get a letter from them, which I believe Linda has. And then at this point, no fence is, they're not thinking about putting a fence up, it's all very natural landscaping, so no fence at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your further enlightenment. Any discussion then on the Planning Commission with this project?
Linda, if you could bring up the issue with the survey, because that was one of my questions. I mean, usually a survey, I mean, I think it's a requirement that it needs to go to be recorded at the county, and the county then checks, that's part of the, that's part of the process, is they check against the other information.
Right. In the, in the olden days, they allowed people to build without surveys, which is why we have situations such as the owners uphill with the duplex have acknowledged that their improvements have encroached on the vacant site. We have a letter from their attorney in the packet acknowledging that, and they've agreed to work with the owner. You'll see that in one of our conditions, we say that before we issue the building permit, they have to submit an agreement with the owners of the vacant lot, letting us know how they plan to deal with those, their improvements that encroach onto the vacant site. Either there's going to be an easement granted to allow them to remain, or maybe they'll relocate them, but they, their attorney has acknowledged that it's their stairs, the duplex stairs, that encroach onto this vacant site. And we do have a recorded survey. Gregory Cook may live out of the area now, but he's been doing surveys in Marin for a very, very long time, and is very familiar with Fairfax, and his work was checked by the county surveyor, stamped by, with his professional stamp as being accurate. So that doesn't mean that there aren't discrepancies in property line disputes, but the place to take care of that is in the civil courts. So if they believe that this is an inaccurate document, they need to deal with it in a civil ma, civil way.
Let me jump in for a moment there. It is actually possible in old subdivisions like this, where you could get two surveys that conflict, and the ultimate, in other words, there is no absolute line in certain circumstances. I actually came in to this in, as a member of the Planning Commission for Sausalito. And ultimately, the final arbiter of where the line should exist is a judge. It's a civil matter between neighbors. So I would caution you to put any language in finding, should you approve this, that enters into a civil matter between these neighbors, particularly the downhill neighbor that has the fence that is claimed to be encroaching. And I might add that if you look on the site map, the downhill neighbor parcel is quite a bit larger than the 40-foot parcel we're discussing. So I would caution you, and likewise with the other legal request, I think that, the same caution, I would avoid entering into stipulations that are legal in nature, and I yield to the chair's legal mind on this, you're a lawyer yourself, but the remedies that were, the remedies are still available, whether you enter into the fray on backing them up or not, you know, I would caution against entering into the fray on them. And so aside from the property line dispute and the encroachment issues, which, again, we, our position is those are civil matters, I think we heard about the construction time, and it seems like a friendly amendment to not have construction on Sunday, which is good for the neighborhood. And then I think the other issue I heard were the windows that you might want to visit, and the disposition of the fence should one be built. And, you know, there's nothing that stops either side from softening a hard fence with growth, let alone a wire fence. So just, in terms of equity, we rarely restrict people's rights on fences and that sort of thing, and we actually encourage people to just get together and work it out. That'd be my comments.
Go ahead.
And I'd like to also make another point, that in the conditions, one of the conditions is that, number three, is that a surveyor is required to stake the property in the foundation, and that will be another way to check that, that the building footprint is built within what's been the recorded survey.
Okay, you're, you're, you're right about not getting into the fray, absolutely. It's a decision of a judge or a jury, and, you know, I think only, only a lawyer neighbor would have the hoots but to... And, you know, I think only, only a lawyer neighbor would have the hoots, but to try to get those conditions, you know, that would be nice if the planning commission would agree to that. That's a matter to be settled or litigated, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, of course, I'm wearing my planning professor hat. There, I'm a planner, so I always get a survey done anytime I think about getting a property. There has been the case where, as staff mentioned, property owners purchase a property and a survey isn't done, and the previous owner encroached, and you didn't know it, and you bought your property, and there was a shed or a driveway or a fence that's encroaching. And unfortunately, depending on the states and depending on the jurisdictions, often it's not allowed. And so, if the landowner does want their property line back, it becomes a matter of the courts, and sometimes sheds need to get moved and fences need to get moved and driveways need to be dug up. So, that, that is something, as our staff mentioned, takes place in the, in the court system, not here. But a survey was required, a survey was done. And as Commissioner Carolyn has pointed out, that those stakes will be in place before development is done. So, I think that is covered, and there's nothing more that commission needs to do. We have our noise ordinance already in place in town, so that limits, again, the window of operation to have construction and hammering and all of that done. And so, again, the condition of not having construction on Sunday, sounds like that's what the neighborhood's in agreement for. Again, that's always the balance of less, fewer days or fewer hours being worked, and then the project may take eight months instead of five months. So, that's a balance just to be aware of. So, it's nice to have a day off, but then construction may continue on for a few more weeks. I think the, the landowner has been really responsive to the wildlife corridor. Again, it's still somebody's property, and it's still zoned for residential, and they have a right to develop that within the town zoning and ordinance restrictions. So, I think the, the current owner and designer have done a nice job of protecting oak trees and moving things and keeping that nature in place. I, I think there really aren't any other restrictions that we should put on that aren't currently in place.
I'd like to address one thing that Harris has brought up, though, and that's these, these privacy window issue. If, you know, I'm not quite sure from the drawings which, which windows you might be talking about. But if, if there's a real issue, we would like to, we would like to know about that. And maybe if staff has been on a, on a more detailed...
Yeah, I spoke with the neighbor, so I can tell you which elevation to look at once I find it.
And this is one of those questions where after staff weighs in to guide you to the relevant elevation, you may want to ask the applicant whether he sees some way to remedy the privacy issue, if he agrees that there's a potential privacy.
Yeah, so if you look at page A, point four, point two.
By the way, I want to thank you for these more miniaturized sized plans. I really appreciate it. Fits on my desk much better.
Okay, so I spoke with the neighbor, and, and she acknowledged that if you look at the first, the window on the first floor above the garage, that's right, that's their kitchen. And so, they're just asking that that be an opaque window because they do need to get some light into their kitchen. And then, one floor up, she is requesting that those two windows be clear story windows, high up in the wall, so that the light comes in, but the neighbor won't be able to look out into their yard. So, David, do you want...
Does, does the applicant have any comment on that, or have you, have you noticed this issue? Please come forth so you're on the record.
Mr. Chair, can, may I? Oh.
Yes, please, Jim.
I was just going to point out that the first floor kitchen window, which is, I think, southeast slightly, or is it simply, I'm sorry? It's south, would be getting some morning light. If there were a fence, and I guess you don't want to put a fence on that side, but if there were a fence, it would shield from the other house. So, that's another compromise, rather than the frosting of a kitchen window, just...
Yeah, I would be more inclined to do like a green planting along the fence line than, than an actual fence, like a laurel or something like that, that gives them a nice, something nice to look at without it actually being a fence, kind of keep, keep with the aesthetic, maybe some kind of natural planting or something like that, some trees, as opposed to, you know, this, this is a very small house and has very few windows. And unfortunately, the windows that are looking over onto their property is one of our egress windows in the bedroom, I believe, for the upper floor, and the main kitchen window, which are very, they're, they're small windows to begin with. You know, we didn't do a big expanse on that side because most of it was underground until we pushed everything forward, and we would have loved to have put more windows there. But I would love to work with the neighbors and come up with a solution that maybe is better for them. And, and I would think that maybe a green planting or something like that would be a better solution than an opaque window or a fence. I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, plantings are fine if you can actually...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, rather than dialogue, you need to address the, I'm sorry.
What I want to, what I want to do is, is, we may not resolve this here. And so, would it be appropriate then to put in a condition that the, that the neighbors will meet with and confer with the applicant?
The condition, the conditions that you've done on other projects is you've required them to meet and come to a resolution, and that if they are unable to come to a resolution, they return in front of you and you'll resolve, you'll come up with a compromise for them.
Permit goes forward.
But the permit goes forward, right?
Okay. I think, I think that might be a good solution for this project.
And there's, looks, it seems to me there's remedies on both sides of the fence line.
Okay, thank you, applicant. Are we done with public comment? Do we have any further comments on the property?
Well, we've... We did, we already closed it. We started talking.
We've closed public comment, I'm sorry. But, no, we've closed public comment.
We've closed public comments?
Right.
Yeah.
We've closed public comment. And you've, you've written a, a letter to us, and you've spoken to us, and your wife's spoken to us, and we have your pictures, and we are taking everything into consideration, believe me. Thank you. Okay, so, let's move on to commissioners' comments on the project.
So, anyway, thank you for underlining the new conditions. I think that's helpful. And I'm glad to see that the tree protection measures are taken care of. That was a big deal with me. I think there's some numbering that might be off, so...
I noticed that, okay.
So, okay, condition number 18 talks about that the arborist needs to, you know, verify that the protection measures are in place. I don't know how anyone feels about if we need to elaborate it anymore, if there, because, I mean, excavation can also be kind of a sensitive time that may be...
Yeah, if you wanted to expand that to include him being on site during the excavation, you could do that.
I know, I know we typically require the engineer to be on site, but I think in this particular case, with the sensitivity of the tree, that would be a good thing.
Okay, thank you. I think, my, my comment on the trees is that this, this applicant has done quite a bit to, to concern themselves with the tree situation, with the natural, with the natural situation. And hopefully, the, you know, the neighbors should feel rested that perhaps this is the last lot in their neighborhood that will be built on, and it'll all grow in and you'll all get used to it, I think. Any further comments?
I was going to make a comment that, same architect, and in this case, I appreciate all of the changes that, that have come back to us. I think it was a clear expression of, it was an interesting juxtaposition this evening in that regard, because I do appreciate coming back with a whole new set of designs that I felt like took into consideration all of the comments and conversations that we had had at our previous discussion on this. So, I felt like moving, you know, moving the house forward solved a number of issues. You know, last time, the parking issue, you know, and we've, we've found out here, you know, we came back with that idea, realizing that it created a new variance request, which was the parking. But we felt like tandem parking, we weren't, we still had the same number of parking spaces, and tandem was okay. So, I thought that was a great solution. We kept the number of parking spaces that we needed. We reduced the amount of excavation, we lowered the walls. I mean, so many things were improved by taking into consideration our discussion. So, I really appreciate that listening and the concrete resolutions and problems that have been solved. I, you know, as always, our job up here is to balance the property, individual property rights of folks who buy property and own property and have the right, just like their neighbors, to build on it and live in it, with the community's well-being. And that's what we try and balance up here, including, including the deers and the trees. Those are part of our community. And, and it's really, that's a difficult thing to do, and we try to do it the best that we can through our ordinances and our hill area development standards and things like that. And I know it's also really difficult when you've lived in a community for a long time, and here's this empty lot that your kids played in and that the deers played in and that we get used to. And ideally, if we could wave a magic wand and pull out the big envelope and preserve those for open space, which we have done, and a lot of times, that's, that's a great solution. And at times, those are property owners who also want to raise their family there and enjoy their proximity to the open space as well. So, we do our best to try and balance that. And I think there's been a lot of good give and take in that regard. What I have heard tonight is also some additional listening to some of the other measures. And in terms of the hours of construction, you know, we added in all of the arborist. I think having the arborist on site during excavation is a good addition to ensure the health and safety of those trees. It's one small addition to the large effort that's already been made. So, I think that would be a good addition to add, to have the, arborist on site doesn't have to be the whole time, but period, at least periodically, and I'll leave that up to the staff, how that gets worded, that they need to, to be, I don't know that they need to like sit there the whole time they're excavating, but they need to check it during excavation? I don't know what the language is for that. Whether we can just say on site during excavation and you guys can figure out...
Or can't we say consult with the arborist during excavation? I'm thinking.
Arborists need to check the work as they're excavating. They don't have to sit there and watch the scooper the whole time.
Well, they, they...
They put, you know, they're, we've, we've included the condition that they check the tree protection zone that are set up before construction starts. So, that's supposed to keep the excavation away, but then it's kind of a, you know, it's hard to say, oh, they come every other day.
I know, I don't know...
It's almost like during, during excavation, if you're worried about it, they should be there to make sure that the tree protection zones aren't compromised.
I think that's a good solution. That, that addresses this issue about who would, you know, who would monitor the site once excavation is underway.
Because once, once, once the tree's damaged, you can't go back.
It's true, although I have been, you know, I have worked on construction projects where you, there's, there's irreparable damage, and then there's initial damage that you, ah, stop the presses, and it is non-reparable. I don't know if this is the same thing. So, and if it's better just to say shall be on site during excavation, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I do think it's a good idea.
Do you have any experience with this, where you go, people just say, come on, I don't want people to say come every other day. I don't want to be too prescriptive either.
Yeah. So, I'll say on site during excavation. So, I think that's additional listening that was done tonight. Again, I think the issue with the arborist and the recommending, I had a question, this recommending of crowning of trees, I didn't see that as a condition, so I heard it as a recommendation. And again, I think that is now and shall be forever a neighbor-to-neighbor conversation that will be ongoing about how to collectively, as neighbors and as a community, maintain the corridor, maintain the tree canopies. Tree canopies don't follow property lines, as we know. So, it leaves it up to us as human beings to respect that trees don't follow property lines and that we have to work collectively because our environment operates collectively. So, I don't think that we should put it as a condition or anything like that. I like the idea of the natural planting to screen the windows. I think we should add the condition that Linda, you had recommended, that the neighbors shall meet to, neighbors shall meet to develop a privacy, whatever.
I would just say they meet, that they meet to come up with some kind of a compromise for ensuring privacy on the south side between the two homes, and if they can't reach, well, I don't think we want to limit them to just vegetation. You can just say come up with some kind of a solution, a compromise. And if they can't reach a compromise, then they come back to you.
That, Onik is, in, put that in here, probably is number 20.
Yeah, and I think it should, it should say that the compromise has to be reached and provided to us in writing prior to issuance of the building permit. I mean, they can work on getting their construction drawings started and everything, but I wouldn't want them to start construction if they hadn't reached the compromise.
Great. Add that in, number 20. And as far as the hours of construction, again, that feels like it was a very good listening and responding exercise, that there, that the contractor came back with a mitigation plan for the traffic, for the excavation, for the hours of operation, no construction on Sundays, construction from eight to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, nine to four on Saturday, but excavation won't start until nine o'clock. That's what I heard. And the excavation is allowed noisiness for the most part. So, I, with all of that, I'm feeling like there's been really good give and take, and it feels good.
I would endeavor to say that the commission leans a certain way, and I'm almost ready to entertain a motion, just that we have to make the, make it, make sure we have the conditions down, the, the additional conditions down correctly, unless there are any other comments? Okay.
The other, the one, the other part, I hear a lot of consensus from neighbors and the property owner about the open natural wildlife corridor-ness of their properties, plural, and commitment to that. I hesitate to codify it in some way, but I also want to be respectful of the open space. And so, is there some way, there's, no, I, I don't know. I think, I think it's a good, everybody, the listening has started and feels good.
I don't know if this helps you, but the town did recently acquire another piece of property, just in this immediate vicinity, that acts as a corridor to that park in San Anselmo, and it is the town's now. So, it will never be built on, and it provides a way for the animals to get through, so. And we do have fence height regulations and things like that, so.
Now, there you go, a town that buys land to build a corridor for animals to get through.
Well, actually, it was donated, wasn't it?
It was donated. I think... I think...
So, are we ready to conclude on this property? And I'd entertain a motion, please.
It's my last meeting.
Yeah.
My last meeting, my last motion. All right, I make a motion to approve application number 14.47 with the added condition to number 18 to have the arborist on-site during excavation, adding point, condition number 20, that neighbors shall meet to discuss privacy concerns of the south side of the home regarding the windows and give staff their discussion in writing before issuance of a building permit.
Their decision.
Their decision. And point 20, uh, condition 21, that construction will not occur outside the hours of 8:00 a.m., uh, will occur between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, no construction on Sunday, and excavation will occur no earlier than 9:00 a.m. on any day. Only friendly amendment, was that bullet point articulated nicely? Was the last bullet point on 5A as part of the construction plan? I believe that's where it was originally, where it fits.
That was where it was originally, but I don't think it, does it...
Same thing just goes there.
Go on, 5A.
It could be a bullet point under 5 or perhaps number 20.
Let's put it under, under 5A.
Leave it, leave it up to staff's discretion. All in favor?
Aye.
You have 10 days to appeal to the town council, and there's a $500 fee for that appeal. I would say you can all work out all your issues, I believe, on this property. Thank you very much. Okay, then we move to our next item, number 7, which is recommendations regarding an ordinance amending the Town Code, Chapter 17.008, to define emergency shelters.
Commissioners, Mr. Chair, the public, I'm going to paraphrase the staff report before you tonight, see if we can move through this rather quick. As a way of background, Government Code 65583A4 requires that the housing element of each town or city identify a zoning district or districts where emergency shelters are allowed as a permanent use without a conditional use permit or other discretionary permits. Recently, in the process underway to update the housing element, we were advised by our subconsultant, PMC World, that not only do we have to adopt the updated housing element by May 31 of this year in order to go on an eight-year cycle instead of a four-year cycle, we have to adopt this ordinance allowing emergency homeless shelters by right in at least a zone. The existing housing element, as well as the draft that's going to be going up to the state and approved last night by the council in this room, has program H-2 dot 1 dot 6 dot 1 that says, "Identify, rezone, provide appropriate standards for housing shelters, homeless shelters." The document identifies both the central commercial zone and what is becoming a public domain, which consists of the public properties of the town hall, Perry's Park, the youth center, the women's club we're in, the ball field, the pavilion, those are the public-owned properties. The other PD property that is being rezoned in this map that's attached is the county-owned library on Sir Francis Drake. So, the zoning map shows the aggregate pieces of around town hall, this Exhibit B, as showing up as PD, where it previously had been RS6, and the county library further up Sir Francis Drake, moving up the page as PD also. Those are the two sites, the two areas, if I will, if you will, targeted to allow homeless shelter, homeless shelters by right up to 20 people, which is our quota in the most recent 2010 census. The, if someone should come in for an application to put a shelter in town, it could, doesn't have to be for the whole 20, there could be one application for one site for 10, there could be an application for another site for another 10. After we've met our obligations to allow by right 20, capacity for 20 homeless individuals, then it's at our discretion to go back to requiring a conditional use permit for any additional shelter space. So, very simply, this is required by law, it's the policy of the town, and we got to do it by May 31, otherwise, we're going to spend a lot of money and staff time in four years and go through this whole thing with the housing element again. And having done three updates in four years, I can tell you, staff would love to not have to do another housing element for eight years. The zoning ordinance is Exhibit A in your packet, the zoning map is Exhibit B, and there is a resolution attached that is Exhibit C, ready to go for you tonight. And I might add that in the ordinance itself, Commissioner Hamilton, with her eagle eye, has pointed out a little bit of a, of a missing, perhaps a missing piece of information with regards to the tables on the second page, the second table with Book 1 and certain parcels transferring over, and with the table on the next page in the middle of the page, and we will look into that. Basically, the, the properties that comprise where we're sitting, the, the town-owned properties around town hall are Zone RS6, but in the existing ordinance section, they're not itemized in the tables like other sections. So, we have a little follow-up housekeeping to do, we'll check into this and see if we can add any clarification, but we think that this ordinance, at this point, is good to go with you making a recommendation, which is what you're doing tonight, for the town council to adopt it. So, I would not get caught in the woods on this little wrinkle. And do you have something to add?
See how they did it? Things like Fairfax Park, which is, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
They, I, they, they separately listed all the parcels, but they also cited certain subdivisions as being in the RS6 zone. And so, that's why she didn't, that's why the attorney didn't list all those parcels.
Right.
Because they were called out as Fairfax Park.
Thank you for that further articulation. So, so, I don't, we'll stand by to take any questions and hear any comments from the public, but it's a pretty straightforward process. You're recommending to do what is the policy of the town, we're required to do it by law, and we got a date in front of us to do it by.
Okay, I have, I have one sort of comment, question. Taking a look at Government Code Section 655834A, there are several, okay, under subsection 4A, there is Roman 1, Small Roman 1 through Small Roman 8, which are objective standards that include the following. And in the ordinance, I didn't see Part 5, which is, which states in the, in the law that the proximity to other emergency shelters, provided that emergency shelters are not required to be more than 300 feet apart. That doesn't seem to be mentioned anywhere in the ordinance. And it's not so much a request that it be added, it's more of a comment and a piece of advice to take another look and see if there needs to be a mention of this parameter.
So noted, thank you very much.
Okay, any discussion?
I had a question before we go out to the, um, given that this is California state law and that every municipality has to have a general plan and include this in part of their general plan, is this the language about defining what the, what a emergency homeless shelter is, and as you mentioned, all the parameters for how it's run and operated, which are part of this in terms of who the operator is? Is it a very, is it, where did that, where did you start from? Was there a common, is there some commonality between all the municipalities, or who, how to, where, do you know where all that language came from?
This was crafted by our town attorney's office, from the attorney that works, the town attorney doesn't usually handle our things because she advises the council on appellate issues, so we have a member of her staff, that Katie Wozinski, who works with us, and she's, she is actually skilled in land use, and she crafted this.
Okay, of course, the, the whole plan here comes from California law, which is sort of the, you know, section, Government Code Section 65583, which talks about the housing element shall consist of certain things. And the part about this emergency shelter issue is the identification of a zone or zones where emergency shelters are allowed as permitted use without a conditional use permit, and either shall include sufficient capacity, et cetera. So, these are state mandated requirements. This is not sort of optional. So, anybody watching in the audience can, can understand that.
And, and just for the record, Commissioner Hamilton, there is a definition of emergency shelter on the second page of the ordinance, and it's referencing back to the health and, it's California Health and Safety Code section, which is defining emergency shelter. And if you notice, it has minimal supportive services.
Just a quick question, you have the date of adoption of the general plan in whereas, the fourth whereas, do you, we want to put, and it's update as of last night on there as well?
No, there was not, it was not an adoption. They accepted the draft and instructed staff to forward it to the state. The adoption will take place, hopefully, in May.
Any other comments, questions, before we open it to the public?
Can you, I, I know we had a discussion earlier, Jim, about places that were maybe shelters could be with conditional uses, but it's, so, I'm just wondering, is that addressed under this 17 dot 130 dot 03? It's a little, I don't know if it needs to be elaborated or not.
I'm sorry, where are you?
In the ordinance, under, no, there's not any...
Section 9. Oh. It's under Section 9, 17 point 130 point 030.
It says conditional uses and structures, is it the top of the page?
Okay, and, and your question is again?
Well, I'm just saying that historically, churches have always kind of provided emergency shelters, so I'm just wondering if maybe, I mean, we mentioned private schools, daycare centers, and nurseries, maybe add churches or other similar type of use.
Well, we can take your comment forward.
Yeah, on that comment, I agree with that comment, actually. Instead of making it, we can make it more generic, LM Mosinary Institutions or something like that, you know, but it's just, again, it's a comment.
Okay.
Any other commissioner comments? If not, I'd be glad to open it to public for any comment.
Hi there. Great job, thank you.
If you care to say that into the microphone.
It's a cheerleading session.
I debated whether to put it in the public records, I, I should. Norma Fragoso, 74 Mirna Avenue, I think that you're required by law to do this, what can I say? And it makes sense in the places that have been recommended. I think it's a good idea, thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment, Bruce? No, okay, so we have, we have heard all the public comment, we'll now close the public comment session. And, um, do we have any other discussion from, from Planning Commission before we entertain? So, is there, okay.
It's more of an observation than a content discussion for our viewing audience out there, that we're sitting here in an empty room, discussing something that I know people have opinion about, and we're sitting here in front of an empty room. And this is an opportunity, now it's a missed opportunity, for people who want to participate in the process, to be a positive force in the process, to have their voice integrated in a constructive way in this, in this process. Because now is a time where we could have that discussion and listen and take into consideration, you know, whatever, whatever comment people want to be, want to make, or, or improvements, or whatever they want to say. But here we are, sitting with an empty, an empty room, except for a couple of wonderful souls who are here and have said a few things. So, I, I'm just making an observation. And then we'll send this up to town council, and we'll see what that room looks like when it gets there. So, that was, it was, it was just a process observation that those of you who are watching can't see our audience unless we can pan around and show them, I don't know, but I don't think we can do that. So.
Well, this is a wonderful democratic process, and we could have this room packed. And that's, those who say, "well, I don't know what's going on," this is a good message. Thank you.
Public trusts your judgment so much.
Exactly. So, is it appropriate to make a motion here?
Can I just, one more thing?
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine making a motion, and I, and I, I would like to, though, suggest, so, Lynda, you had, you had brought up the way in which the code, and I haven't gone back to the code book, I have it here, the way in which the code addresses things like the park right outside our door, it's different than the table for, so that, so the way that this goes is that, which I think is very clear, is here's where it's being taken out from the RD and the RM, and then you can clearly do a comparison match, and here's where it's going in to the PD. And I think it would strengthen the document to do something like that with the other 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 book page line items.
So, we'll bring that to the town, to the town attorney and explain, because...
Yeah, because it is different from the way that's done with the other ones, and I totally understand that.
Right.
But I think it would strengthen it.
Right.
So, we have a close of public hearing, we've had our discussion, and I would entertain a resolution on this, on this resolution, a motion?
It's like to make another.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I, I would make a motion to adopt, or I would make a motion to recommend that the town council adopt...
You want to adopt a resolution?
We're adopting a resolution with, that's a recommendation, which, where is that?
You adopted a resolution recommending the town council adopt ordinance number XX.
Our resolution.
Okay. There it is, got it. Okay, so I would recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 15 dash 10, recommending to the town council that they adopt an ordinance to include emergency shelters, and do I have to repeat that whole thing?
Recommending the town council adopt the emergency shelter ordinance.
Thank you. Recommending that the town council adopt the emergency shelter ordinance with whatever comes back from the town attorney that we've talked about here as the additions.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. Okay. Thank you, staff. You've been... You always do a great job. I don't know what we would do without the job that you do. Okay, are there any discussion items that we haven't... Or Planning Directors' report?
We have to approve the minutes first.
Yeah, we're on number eight.
We're in the minutes. Sorry. Minutes. Approval of minutes. Any comments?
I have one note just on the minutes from the February 25 meeting on page 3. The third paragraph from the bottom regarding my comment on moderate and above moderate income levels. For this reason, Commissioner, as it said that the state encourages diversity, that should actually be that the planning profession encourages diversity, not the state.
I have a process question. On February's minutes, I wasn't here, so I have to recuse myself. And we have three people here. And then it was a joint meeting. How does that work in terms of approving minutes with a joint meeting, not at a joint meeting?
We're going to send copies to Affordable Housing Committee, but you would just adopt them on your part of it as an independent body?
Can we do that without Esther? Because it's only three people.
I'm sorry? You had a quorum.
I know we had a quorum, but we don't have a quorum of people who are there now.
Shelley has to recuse herself.
You can't. You can't.
Then I won't be here for the next meeting.
Then Roxanne's not going to be here for the next meeting, which means we will... We shall never have.
We will have that institutional problem.
Well, we have a conundrum. I'll find out. Thank you. I'm going to ask a question about whether we need a simple majority for adopting minutes versus a quorum majority when your regulatory actions are taking place. I'll find out, and we'll let you know next time.
So can we make a motion to approve them, and if we can, pending your finding?
That's a great idea.
Always thinking.
No, well, in that regard, I do have a comment, Roxanne. I don't know how we're going to do without you. You've lent your education, expertise, and wonderful, you know, teaching ability to speaking here, and you give a lot to us. So thank you for all you've done.
And we'll get to that also, again, on my report and the Commissioner comments. So there's time to reiterate that.
Okay.
Should we make a motion on the minutes, then?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. I... We'll do them separately. Make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 15th. Oh, actually, I wasn't at that one.
Says you were.
Yeah, says you were.
No, you're right. I'm sorry. I was off. That was December. All right. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 15th Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no?
Okay. I'll also make a motion to approve the February 25th joint meeting of the Planning Commission and Affordable Housing Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have an interesting thing. We have an election for a vice chair and a tree commission committee person.
And you only have, after Roxanne steps down tomorrow, you have three people.
Can we vote Esther even if she's not here?
I don't think so. You could put off this election if you like, but we're not going to have a...
Can you be vice chair?
So the one thing we need is that we need a tree committee representative.
Well, I'm the alternate, and I've attended the last two meetings of the tree committee.
What do we need? Don't we have one?
So would you like to step up?
You're volunteering.
I will continue on the tree committee.
As the active alternate?
I see.
Okay, okay. So tell Susan that Laura's going to be the active alternate till we have a permit.
And we will continue to put the election...
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
But were you going to elaborate in your Director's Report that one member of the tree committee is going away?
Yeah, I will. Well... Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then I would recommend, actually, Shelley for a vice chair, since she has sort of done this before.
Yes, I enthusiastically accept.
I'll second.
Do we vote on this, then?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the new tree representative and vice chair?
No, no, just a vice chair. Just a vice chair.
Just a vice chair. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have a vice chair, and we have a continuing active alternate tree member. Mr. Chair, not to be a pest, but the hour's late, and I was here for three hours last night.
Right. With that, we have the Planning Commissioner, the Planning Directors' report. Thank you.
And you're done with discussion items? We're not going to...
I think we're done with discussion items.
Good, okay. Okay, so just briefly, as Linda mentioned, we're losing one member of the tree committee from the Town Council, because it's actually the Town Attorney weighed in that it's not appropriate to have someone on the tree committee that then sits as the appellate at the appellate level. So that's the change going on there. And as I mentioned last night, in this room, the Town Council took the joint... Well, actually, your formal recommendation via the resolution forwarding on the draft. There were further edits before last night's meeting from the mayor and Commissioner Peter Lacks. There was maybe, I don't know, 15 edits. And then last night, we got maybe another 20. They... Some of them addressed some sort of massaging of policy and then some tweaking, making the document tighter, like you all did at the joint meeting. So we made those changes today, and we're going to review them with the mayor tomorrow morning. And it will be sent into the state on Monday. And then while their statutory requirement is a 60-day review, which, God forbid, that would happen, because that would put us at about, you know, in the middle part of May when we got it back, and we have to adopt by the end of May, and it still has to come back to the Planning Commission. So we're hoping for a less than 30-day review. That's our guess. And we're actually optimistic that we may have this before you at your next regular meeting, which we're really hoping for. And then I think that's April 16th, and then that may change. So for those in the public, it may be a special meeting, depending on when we get it back from the state. And likewise, after it comes back through you, and you get to think about the state's comments, hopefully you'll recommend it up to council. And if all goes right, at the regular May 6 meeting of the Town Council, it'll be up for adoption. And one footnote is if we have some wrinkles with the state, we don't have to negotiate out those wrinkles prior to adoption. It's just... It's contingent upon the town adopting the document that gets us on that eight-year cycle. So that's good news. Yes.
So the town can adopt a version that the state hasn't approved, hasn't...
That has not conditionally certified. That's right.
Okay.
It's a little bit of a frustration for the State Department of Housing Community Development. They consider that a loophole in the law, but our very worthy consultants told us that that was the case, and we verified it. And so that's good news. So if we just get to adoption, we're on the eight-year cycle. We can worry about the wrinkles, if there are any. We'll see. We have already an indication from the state that where we're going is basically rolling over, as you know, rolling over the existing sites and adding... Actually, it went up from 16 second units to 17, because the Table H4, in going back through, we found a discrepancy on one of the parcels, a large parcel. And rather than adding one more unit in that large parcel, we decided to just add it to the second units, because that parcel is actually a controversial parcel in town where there'll be some negotiations involved. So that was the only change since you guys saw it, which was just three weeks from yesterday in this room that we had that joint meeting. It's amazing. We've been on a treadmill. So, and I can't think of anything else. I'm a little brain-dead from last night. Yes.
Just an FYI, as far as public process goes, April 16th is right during spring break for Ross Valley School District and TAM High School District. Just an FYI in terms of people's availability, including my own, to think about. And maybe, given the timeline stuff, if you wanted to push it back to the 23rd or the 30th, it might give you more wiggle room for the state timing to come in. Just a thought.
Okay, well, thank you. But we also have a tight turnaround between... We have to publicly notice the May 6 meeting for the council, and it has to go out 10 days ahead. So we have... And then we may have changes after... At any rate, we'll... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll have to check. We are down... After Roxanne steps down tomorrow, we're down to four members. So we have to have full house to have a quorum. So, and we are going to now advertise... Okay, we'll work the housekeeping offline, if it's okay. Okay, so anyway, we'll work on that. And thank you, because I'll be going on vacation on Saturday for two weeks. But so Linda will follow up with getting you all together via email to see if... I mean, she'll contact you via email to find out your availability, if you're not going to be here on the next regular scheduled meeting. And then that brings us to losing Roxanne. And I want to echo what the chair said. You've been just wonderful. I'm really sorry that you... You know, Roxanne's moving just outside of the boundary of town. Hopefully, you'll come back someday. We'll get you back on the commission. And I do want to invite you back either at the next meeting or the meeting after this, so we can formally recognize your time here. So it's like Hotel California. I told Brandon, you know, you can check out, but you can never leave. You're now part of us. But we want to get you back to recognize you, too. So we'll contact you on that. And I think that's... I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Planning Director. And do we have any Commissioner comments and requests?
What's the process for getting more of us up here? Where are we on that?
We're going to... We're actually putting an ad in the paper. We've been pounding the pavement, talking to people, reaching out. There's now three vacancies and two applications. And we like to try to get more than the vacancy number, so that the council has a choice among applicants. And I'm not sure why it's been so hard to... Me, I mean, I have some ideas why it might be so hard. But, you know, we're hoping that we get a nice number of folks to step up. And we've heard some, you know, rather refreshing news on some people that might be applying. So stay tuned. It was not going to be on April 1st. Horrible day to appoint someone to the Planning Commission, anyway. It'll be at the May 6 meeting, unless there's some special meeting of the council when they appoint. So, you know, so stay tuned. I think, hopefully, we're not down to the bare quorum for very long. We'll see. And I think no matter what number of applicants we have by May, we'll probably just go ahead and put it on the docket for the Town Council in May, so that we don't keep running at the ragged bare quorum.
And I just want to say thank you both. It's been a pleasure to all of you. I don't want to go, but I'm leaving town, and so I can't serve anymore. So I hope if I come back in the near-ish future, I'd love to be active back in town, so.
But we may still have vacancies by the time you...
Well, let me say, I think we're online, and anybody watching this, this is a fascinating thing to do, to sit up here and, you know, regulate with the town code and ordinances, and try to work things out with building owners and neighbors. And it's very, very rewarding. And I have a very busy schedule myself every single day, and I still have time to prepare for these. So I recommend anybody who's interested to apply.
And I would add that one of the, you know, I've had numerous people, especially over this past year, "Why do you do that? Why are you still on that?" And one of the reasons, Roxanne, is because of the people that I have enjoyed working with for all of these years up here. And I'm speaking specifically of you, because you're going to be leaving. And I was like, darn. Because really, it is an amazing, you know, it's the collegial... You learn so much, because people bring such amazing expertise to this, and perspective, and respect, and sharing of knowledge, and philosophies, and worldviews, and you just learn so much. And I really have appreciated having you on here and learning from you, both up here, out there. And I'm glad you're not going too far, so you're still going to be part of our community. That's good. So we'll have to find another way of getting you back in somehow.
Okay, so if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Roxanne, for all the time.